All right. And exactly. All right, I call to order the City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting. It was Tuesday, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, and the time is two P M on the dot. Before I do the roll call, I have an announcement. Yesterday, Brian submitted a designation, so we have a Vegas. So we have a forum today, but barely because we have an excuse to absent of a character. So I'll go through the roll call for everybody else. Commissioner Burger here. Commissioner Ward here, Commissioner Schultz here, Commissioner Lawless here. Got everybody good. All righty. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda with two changes.
Please.
First, I want to add back public comment at the end.
Thank you.
And I will make a motion after the minutes to add it permanently to the agenda. The second thing is add the minutes of May twenty third, twenty twenty three under approval minutes. In the past, we kept them on there until we, the commissioners approved the minutes and we've never seen.
They're not in here yet.
No.
So we need to add that at the next period.
Yeah, but I, yeah, you need to put both sets of minutes that we should approve. We didn't, in the past, we never let, when we didn't have minutes. They didn't work there. We never dropped them until we.
Okay, so I. We have a motion for the two changes to the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mark has seconded. All in favor? I, my vote. All right. Okay, so we have unanimous on that. All right, so the motion is to approve what we have the meeting minutes of the thirteenth only, correct?
No, we need to add the minutes that we need to, under approval minutes, we need to have the minutes, approved minutes of May twenty third, twenty twenty three. And of two thirteen twenty four.
Okay.
Even though we're only going to approve the one.
I got it. Okay, all right, so moved. But you made a motion, right?
Yeah.
We have a second, second part. All in favor? Now I understand what you're saying. We're good. All right, so we, we agree to do public comments both before and after, correct?
Right.
All right, so we'll start with the. Opening meeting public comments. So have any public comments in the row before we start? James, please.
I have a comment question. At the March thirteenth meeting, you guys discussed the Blue Zones and I know that the P. Carrion, someone else does research, research on the Blue Zones. And at that time, it made a determination that it was probably not because of the high cost and everything, and that's good. And then several citizens, including myself, had done research and have seen how many. How many cities have dropped it because of cost and then left with costs? And with Ocean Shore having the community club, Project Connect, D S H S have a lot of free programs for seniors and stuff. I was just wondering, it appeared at the last meeting that maybe you guys were going backwards of Blue Zones and was wondering why that was. Because my research showed that it was probably not a good deal to get into. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, any public comment before the meeting?
Hi, Gary. Oh, sorry. No, I don't have any comment. Thank you for the offer.
Anne Reese, any public comment before the meeting?
No, thank you.
All righty, so.
Can I make a move ahead this time so we don't forget? What, what? I'd like to make a motion that we add public comment at the end of the meeting. Add it to agenda for all meetings.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you so much. I just bought it. So did Sarah. We both brought that. Not willing to drop it, so I need to make sure. Absolutely, no worries. All right. So what we're working on mostly. Is a long-term project is looking at aligning. The zoning map and. The zoning map and the zoning code. With the, with a. You know, looking at lining that with what we had in the comprehensive plan. When we looked at this, we want to look at this in two ways. He said we want to actually physically have. Groups, subcommittees, whatever you want to call it, three or less walking tracks of land, driving tracks of land. At the same time, looking at select pieces of the code. Last meeting, I did a sort of set of principles and guidelines, and I didn't bring them back. And I received no comments on them, and that's okay. Because I will bring them back to the next meeting, so if anybody has anything they want me to add to the principles and guidelines from the thirteenth June meeting. Please let me know. Within a week, because I'm going to get a better job of giving Sarah more time to get the agenda out and everything. We have a little issue getting minutes and other stuff. We do have a vacancy. If you know anybody that wants to get on, please let us know. And Marshall, we were going to try to get us some larger scale zoning maps at some point.
I know you were going to.
I think I, I think I may have printed them out.
Okay, I can even combine again, and what we can bring up in the next meeting. If we remember.
Yeah, I'll remind you.
I promise I'll remind you this next time we bring the log.
I appreciate that.
Zoning.
Because I was trying to get myself to the meeting right.
I am. Crazy business. So we'll, we'll talk about some other off agenda items and during my reports, actually, I talked about last night. We can do that if we do commission reprints. So we're going to start off with his mark and. Mark and Carrie agreed to go through seventeen seventeen A, eighteen nineteen and nineteen A. Going to give us an overview of what they saw. Sort of walking through that area as far as developed, undeveloped, looking at the zoning map and the general land use map. Sort of getting a feel for what we call reality has put on top of what the zoning and the land use has done. So Mark, could you kind of just briefly walk us through what you sort of found as you went around?
Sure. I said, I volunteered to wander through district seventeen seventeen A, eighteen nineteen and nineteen A. And found that I believe those districts provide a lot of opportunity for growth in Ocean Shores. I realize there are significant areas in which there are a single family, some high density and some commercial. I feel that the growth potential comes if we rezone these areas as mixed use slash resort tours. If we add the mixed use resort tourist capabilities to these districts. It will allow contractors and developers to consider opportunities in these areas. Whereas now that opportunity may not be currently, may not currently exist under current zone standards. I do realize that rezoning in our city is complicated. But I'm in favor of doing so in ways that create potential for growth. And by doing so, provide our citizens with more choices in retail and recreational opportunities. It was, it was an interesting exercise to go south. And, and tour. Those areas. I hadn't done it very much in the past, so it was, it was good to look at it. There's. I, I think. If we rezone, it provides us with opportunities that we wouldn't currently have, so. That was my thought. I can read you what.
Oh, no, we have carries. That's sort of the same thing.
Okay.
And, you know, and that's sort of our sort of lead as we go into discussion. We're going to get into this real. I don't know, say, difficult issue, and it's probably not difficult, is are we going to look at. Currently zoned. R one to the. Zoned something else. What we really, a lot where we're focusing on was looking at. What is R nine, R eight in the current zoning map? Which is sort of that area along Ocean Shore Boulevard. Down to, I think that's Beach Drive. Would that be about right?
East Street.
East Street, yeah. That's currently zoned R nine. And in the comprehensive plan. It had what was called resort tourists, and what we talked about was sort of a mixed use resort tourist area. And we haven't even started putting pen to paper. But what we really looked at was on that stretch. Is there opportunity there for resort tourists? What I found interesting was, I'll probably have to pull up a map where it used to help, is. On the east side of Ocean Shore Boulevard is currently zoned. R one, all the way down by the jetty. Down here, and the comprehensive plan as approved by council, that's actually listed as resort tourist all the way from. You can't even tell you what the name of that street is. That's the last street that goes in to the circle there.
Spinnaker?
Yeah, from Spinnaker. All the way to the jetty on the east side is also shown on the, on the comprehensive plan as resort tourist. The area, and I know we're really focusing on this, we probably won't do it, but as you continue along Ocean Shore Boulevard from the jetty. To the sewage treatment plant. Inland side, you know, away from the, the jetty wall itself. Current zoning has right on Ocean Shore Boulevard R nine, right behind it, R eight, which are very high density. The thing we probably want to discuss is. Leaving that in high density. Making that swap resort tourist mixed use. Then what would be the impact of taking that swap and running it all the way back up to Spinner? And showing the comprehensive plan. So it's sort of an amalgamation. You see what I'm talking about? Basically, what we said was going to be high density, making that all resort tourist. And then here, here in the comprehensive plan. So thoughts on that first?
We took that east side of the Boulevard?
East side of the Boulevard.
Yes.
The, the east side, Spinnaker down by the jetty. There's two, I counted, actually, that's the cluster of single family homes. It's like five single family homes in there. And currently on R one. The only reason I bring it up is because the comprehensive plan. Called that resort tourist very clearly. We went across the street in that area in the comprehensive plan. The easier, because you're not impinging upon current R one, is the stretch. From the jetty to the sewage treatment plant, that's currently R nine, R eight. It's got four single families on Ocean Shore Boulevard, and the rest are all fungos. You know, that sort of building, so converting that to resort tourist or leaving it high density. Really wouldn't impact current people, current landlords, because when they purchase, they. Purchased high density and chose to build a single family in it. Does that all make sense? So thoughts on. Taking the resort first, which is still defining as a mixed use. Which is basically residential with small scale, bodega type, you can New York term. Market capabilities, small restaurant, coffee shop. Sort of in the grand scheme of things, what we wanted to do in the resort tourist comprehensive plan. But looking at the opportunity to maybe extend that along Ocean Shore Boulevard. So thoughts, Thor?
So we wouldn't impact those areas along the jetty very much? Would that, that would not include Division nineteen, just Division nineteen A, definitely?
Right now, the comprehensive plan did not put it in Division nineteen, except on the west side of Ocean Shore Boulevard.
Dan, what are your thoughts? As part of the comprehensive plan, so.
Well, but the resort tourist wasn't in here.
Yeah, I, I have a vision.
I think it's a step in the right direction. Is it the end all? Probably not, but I think it's, it's progress to where we might want to go in rezoning going forward.
The sticky part would be. As we move around north, what's currently R one. So what I don't know is what our appetite is to take an R one and zone it in that use. So any thoughts on that, Mark?
Well, you're, you're right. That, that becomes more complicated because people thought thinking one thing, and then if we change it. Certainly, everything would be grandfathered, but. What kind of impact that'd have on the neighborhood? There's nothing many people, they're certainly bold and asking what they, what they, they think they're going to kick about it and. I'll go through their heads.
Yeah, I mean, that's one opportunity. Again, we're, we're all, we're many, many, many months away from a new zoning map, but that's a way to do it. And a rezone has significant public impact, input.
Yeah.
So there's lots of opportunities also for people to input at that time during all of these zoning areas.
My impression of the areas, there's a lot, there's a lot left permanent ones in there. It's a lot more weekenders.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think. I think rezoning is a good step in the good direction. I don't see any problem with bringing it to R two. Maybe in R three. And increasing opportunities for more housing. For mixed use.
I mean, the other thing we've talked about is. Because what one of these we're trying to do is the clear desire of the permanent planning commission to figure out a way. To get some commercial retail. Either down by the jetty, down by David Point, because there's a clear desire, my folks have the ability to go to a small, big coffee shop, sandwich shop down there. The other option, which is kind of an interesting option, is called that. What we had the comprehensive plan called commercial residential. I'm talking that little section on the west side of Ocean Shore Boulevard that's currently R one. Then call it. Commercial residential, and that would give you the opportunity to do that sort of a small scale retail in some of those open spots left in there. That is compatible in a residential area, very small scale. Where is that? Basically, from Spinnaker to the jetty on the east side. It's currently R one, comprehensive plan called a resort tourist. By definition, resort tourist is almost equivalent to the current R nine. So we would do a massive. Density change to the current residents if we made it resort tourist, if we made it. Commercial residential. Which in the future is defined, and we can change, as the comprehensive plan basically said, commercial first floor, residential second floor. Is what the comprehensive plan calls commercial residential. So new construction and just that little piece that we're talking about, we could extend it up. Because there's actually a whole lot, if, I don't know if you guys look. But on the east side of Ocean Shore Boulevard in nineteen. Which is up to Beach Drive and one of the least developed sections of home, but it is only two. On that side of Ocean Shore Boulevard.
I don't know if you remember. All, all the way to, all the way to Sportsman is. You know, we're starting to see some development on the cul-de-sacs in that area, but that is sparsely developed along that scratch from Sportsman South all the way to the. To the R nine at the corner by the jetty.
This way, if the issue becomes on the west side, if we extend, if we try to extend the resort tourist north. There's lots of single family that would just be in the way, basically. That's probably.
Once you get north of Beach Street.
There's probably only four or five lots left, not built in there.
Right.
So, you know, if we wanted to keep it sort of symmetrical, we could do the. Commercial residential from Sportsman on the east side. From Sportsman, the current R one, first set of lots all the way down to the jetty. And then where the R nine currently started to make that. Resort tourist. Thoughts on that? All right, we haven't written the. Obviously, the commercial residential is just a half a paragraph in the comprehensive plan, so. We'd have to talk some more about that because there are. Do we want to restrict future residential to second story only, or do we want to encourage mixed use, commercial first floor, residential second? So I mean, we'll have to talk about the language, we all have, of how we want to do that. That's sort of, there's not a whole lot to say. Did you go interior to nineteen and eighteen?
I did.
And. Sparingly.
Very, very sparsely. There's just not a whole lot there, which made me think there's opportunities.
Yeah. Again, though, I mean, I think we need to have a lot of discussion about taking an R one and making it something else. Every time we do that.
Right.
Especially with this existing single family, you're going to have bigger issue. So, all right, all right, and then finally. Seventeen A is weird. Do you know why seventeen A was carved out? Thor?
Yeah. Well, they got the bright idea that. The oceanfront lots are being typically initially being sixty feet wide. They, they wanted to get more of them in there so they could make more money when they sold them, so they created model lots out of.
So all those Keystone lots, nineteen A?
Yeah.
So do the Keystone lots stay in seventeen or no?
They're in seventeen and seventeen A.
Okay, I'm just curious why seventeen A got carved out all by itself.
They, they, they rethought things like they did in five and five A. Seventeen A actually, and actually part of Division. Nineteen and nineteen A used to have a big S-shaped boulevard.
And then the last thing, and I know you don't, I may not have a map or a file, but as you go down to the very north end of seventeen. There is some R four. And so R two, right before you get to Marine View on the ocean side. The round R four does have. I think some duplexes and three complexes in there. What's interesting is that little wedge where. Sando and Ocean Shore Boulevard diverge. Is R two, I believe. I don't think any duplexes in there. I'm not sure why that was zoned out.
Yeah, to my knowledge, those are all developed and single family, yeah. I'm not aware of any duplexes in that area.
So as we had talked about. That would I probably be where we would start talking medium density residential. In that area, because it's currently. Zoned. Two and higher. And the comprehensive plan listed it as moderate density. So I mean, that whole little section sort of makes sense. A little piece, what's going on. We're not going to talk. Moderate density zoning today, maybe next week, but one of the things we had talked about in moderate density areas is perhaps permitting that events. So there's some opportunities in there. If we wanted to do that, and that particular area, there's very few single family homes. It's a very small area. But it's basically that little wedge in here. There's not maybe one single family home at the snow, that end of it, and the rest is mostly. Four places and condominiums and stuff, I think, but I'd have to look and see for sure. The last thing is. And I'm going to defer to Thor again. We've got this mix of R eight. And R nine that is basically between Marine View and. Green View Avenue. And Thor, you said that originally was intended because of the golf course, or they just thought it would be popular value? Do you have any idea why we had all that high density in there?
Well, at the time, it was going to be a so-called second golf course. Hence all the names, the whole Palm Boulevard. That's which was basically. A scheme by the developers to get more money out of the people who bought property there. In other words. You can be on the golf course for forty thousand bucks, or you can have a residential after thirty thousand. They never really had any real plans to build a second golf course. But. It was a good sales promotion at the time, back in mid-sixties. So after, after when the developer went bankrupt, those were all leftover pieces. The adjoining property owners sued the developer and their successors. For money. Claiming that they were promised a second golf course, and where the heck is it? And so the developers. In the bankruptcy settled. With the property owners by giving them an additional fifty feet along their Farnes Beach lot. That's what that. Extra fifty feet shows on that adjacent lots there. And that was, and the city has apparently acquired that, or something. I'm not sure how that happened. The city claim that it's there. It's a buffer, basically. My suggestion would be since that's virtually unused and it's all now became high density, I don't know. I think that might have been. Something as part of the settlement, but I'm not really sure. The settlement occurred about seventy-one or seventy-two. In any event, that's the, that's the largest. Unused. Area of multi-family density town, stretching from the Boulevard up from Rimview Drive all the way down to Sportsman's Way. Which if you didn't want to really irritate anybody, you could make high density and mixed commercial too. There's probably a whole lot of screaming, probably.
There's some structure going on in there, right, Marshall? But not a ton. I mean, it's all single family going in there.
Yeah.
I've looked at a couple of homes in there.
There's a, there's some lots along the streets here, but mostly interior there is big. Which basically vary acres owned by, I'm not sure.
You know, also unplatted areas in between.
Let me sound like city.
Yeah, I can't remember.
So he actually owns the unplatted area.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's two or three of them in there. Between, between Marine View Drive and. Along, between Marine View Drive and Fairwood, and then over towards Spinnaker, or over towards Greenview.
Yeah, there's very, very large behind the platted lots, section of the way.
And on both sides of the, of the game reserve.
Yeah.
Between the game reserve and the back of the plots.
Which, which, oh, yeah, Bay or something.
What is, what have they?
Yeah.
That's zoned at B one.
B one.
It was, it was, it was rezoned with B one uses through a planned unit development agreement. But there was a rezone involved in that.
One of the reasons. That there's intent, attention on high density. Is because it gets to what we've heard last night, and we keep hearing and hearing again. Is as we get into. High, medium density, we can start looking at lot sizes. Minimum square footages, all in the intent of. Middle housing. You know, more affordable housing for middle income folks. So. That is one of the areas where we could look at, because those again are mostly standard lots, seventy-two hundred square foot lots, nothing. Except for the large, the occasional one, but not many. That's where, as we look at writing. The high density. Into a medium density code. We can look at things like the ability to subdivide below. Seven thousand two hundred square feet without a common wall subdivision. Which is, there's a desire for, right?
There is a significant desire for that.
Right, and so somebody could go in and buy two or three or four adjoining lots and very easily come up with. You know, smaller, less than seventy hundred square foot lots with access. And still have smaller five, six, seven hundred square foot. Standalone homes in there, a significant number, not tiny homes. Certainly, if you do tiny homes, we wanted to get rid of the square foot requirements. But we're talking about a more standard built home, not something that was. Oh, I, I just know that Eric, I ride my bike in there two or three times a week. Down Fairwood, so I know that I was unaware of the large on. I guess they're platted, but they're not individual lot divisions in between.
Yeah, there's, there's significant wetland and critical area encumbrances on a lot of those large tracts down in that area that.
Not as much on the west side, is there, Fairview?
Yeah, the west side has got some pretty swampy ground in there.
Well, I thought it was mostly buffer from the oil.
No, both, both sides of Fairwood. Are encumbers either by wetland or by buffer, you know, for at least the first row of lots.
But not impossible.
Not impossible. But you got to have mitigation, you know, in order to develop, and that's. We're burning through it at a fairly high rate of speed right now.
You mean your, your bank?
Yes.
Well. Could your bank considerably cover that hole already?
No.
Then you'd have to expand the bank.
That's a great question. I don't know. I don't have an answer to that. I'm, I'm looking for opportunities in town to expand the bank, if possible.
What's your likes on the bank now?
When I get done with the flurry that I've got in front of me right now, about two point three credits. Out of eight.
So the whole bank is a total of eight credits on you.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
I will have burned through five credits, I think, in the last year.
Kidding me?
It's cheap property. You know, so, yeah, there's been a lot of, a lot of activity there.
And there's no way to extend it south, whether it works.
No, I think we've pretty well boxed ourselves in there. We'll, we'll explore other opportunities as, you know, I mean, there's some other large tracts with some, it's some good wetland in it that. You know, if the price is right, it may, it may justify trying to roll that into the bank, because we've already got the banking instrument drafted.
Behind Fairwood. Oil park, you know, or the way the pottery to the east, right?
Something.
That's, I'm trying to, yeah.
It's got to be set for you guys own, right?
Yeah, the city would have to own it.
For sure. For sure. There's not much city owned land now that would be eligible bank.
No, and I don't know what the what the, you know, possibility of the state owned land. Uh, out in the game preserve if um. You know, if that could be used as a mitigation bank or. And it's already a preserve. It's not gonna it's not gonna be used, so. I don't know.
So I mean, that's sort of. The tour. I think we've had a a good discussion about. Look at this one about resort tourist and when I get the large scale map, we'll get one that we start marking up. Oh, Marshall, I'll stop bringing it every week. Um, a little discussion about perhaps um commercial residential up in here. Which is actually a really a very nice mix. I like that medium in here and then the current R nine and R eights making that all high. Um. Which is. Then we need to start figuring out what the high is. Any more discussions on? Those particular districts in just a little bit.
We have such small lots here in town. Making those. Commercial of any kind still has seventy two hundred square foot lot and there's just not much of it there. Should big enough for anything of any substantial size. The so called seven golf course, second golf course, however, does lend itself to more expensive. Development that only a commercial entity could probably afford to do with the wetlands issue, stuff like that. So uh, while we may want to. Rezone stuff on let's say from Sports and Sheriff's Town. It doesn't offer a whole lot of. Area for anything of any size.
Were there really not many places left in town that do?
Only the second golf course.
And that's the area you talked about that their company.
Yeah, it's a well, by some means.
So that's.
Did they call that the old Omni Court? Weren't those old Omni Court?
I mean, so what we could do was we could carve out the old Omni Court properties. As something else with R nine around it.
Yeah, good.
With with high density around it. I mean, as a. Because I think we've into all the talking we've had. We clearly want high density residential. There's there's a desire for that. Not just for. The current opportunities to do middle housing at small lot size, but perhaps in the future, there is more need. For duplexes and triplexes. I mean. We'll see. But uh. If there is an opportunity in the old Army Corps property, it's a great chance to go ahead and start looking at another B one type. Or a resort tourist type in the middle there. And it would definitely take somebody to get in there because I I know exactly what you're talking about. Now that is very soggy back in there.
It's a mess, yeah.
So if somebody get in there, we have to have some a big hitter looking to a large mitigation on his own. Basically, kind of like what the tribe did when they did the casino across the street. That that level of work.
Yeah.
Okay. But we feel that. So any other discussions on sort of the walkabout we did? Before we start looking at code, which is one of my least favorite things in the world to do. We'll look quickly at. What do we want to go next, Dan? I was thinking maybe. Twenty. Because I really want to get to the. Oh, eleven sixteen fourteen and twenty. Because that's a lot of the current issues we're having with B two becoming over like rentals where we're having. We've had lots of discussion about the B one on. Olympus that's become overcome by residential. So I think. Oh, so I'd actually have to do fifteen as well to get all this. We'd have to do fifteen, twenty, fourteen. And sixteen. Just sort of cover all of that. Um, and I will definitely volunteer to do that because I don't have a lot of familiarity. You know, I ride my bike around it all the time with some of the issues around fifteen and official canal. Does anybody else want to work on fifteen, twenty, fourteen and sixteen?
I'm in fourteen. That can be.
Okay, absolutely. So well, that's pretty simple and it'll be interesting for you to go a little bit further toward the community club and. Be somewhat surprised that that is all B one and B two in there because there's not a lot of B one and B two going on in there, I don't think. Uh, are all that stuff getting built? Just as you turn on to uh, is that gonna be nightly rentals, I assume?
Uh, well, no, you're not.
Really?
They're uh, they're single family residential.
Really?
Just north of the discovery.
Yeah.
They don't look like they're packed in there pretty tight, but I guess.
Uh, it's two two residences with garages on the back, um, but they I I mean, they could turn into that. It's zoned for that. But they haven't gone through um the the conditional use permitting on the shoreline to be able to allow commercial use. So they stayed with residential. Start building.
Okay. I was curious because I it's pretty hot and heavy construction going on over there right now.
Yeah.
I assume that was. Somebody do. All right. So I will do that. We're gonna do fourteen, sixteen, fifteen and twenty next on the walk around the report. Good?
Good.
All right, so now the painful part. Going for the agenda page. Uh, five. So what I did, and I did this in track change, and I'll never do that again because there's too much changing. Um. What I did was the pages five. Six and seven are the code. Everything else is rentals code. So as you start reading the existing code. You spend a lot of time flipping. To the rest of this. So in the future, I want to remind everybody to bring their. Their chapter seventeen with them. They're probably not going to cut and paste. The rest of chapter thirteen in with the agenda packet. Well, I think we passed that out to me. Everybody got a full copy of seventeen. It'll make it a lot easier. What we're talking about is low density. And the first discussion I'd like to have is do we want to leave it low density? Or we want to make it low density slash single family? One of our agreed upon. Uh, sort of principles was to maintain the character of our. Single family residential communities. Um, so do we want to keep calling low density slash single family residential? Any thoughts? Yes, go ahead. Yes, yes. Both agree. Okay. Any objection, though, to keeping both names? I mean, it's just. Because I think that's one thing we really wanted to do is maintain the characters of the family. It's defined per acre, lots per acre. So it's we'll call it and every other zoning I've looked at and gone through has gone to low, medium and high. Um, low is almost always empty. But in the comprehensive plan, it listed out the density and it says single family. In the comprehensive, the single family and the density is such that it maintains like I did in math, six thousand eight hundred square foot lots. We'll leave the seventy two hundred and the whole ladder. It's based on a on a uh per acre density in the comprehensive plan.
Maybe difference.
No, won't make a difference at all.
Or we just keep both. We get a couple of eight thousand, nine thousand square foot lot.
Yeah. Or or over density. It's on purpose. I just made a couple of changes that I didn't like some of the grammar. Uh, this this district is intended for low density detached. Single family dwellings to assure the maximum of light, air, open space, private privacy and the protection of property values. Other uses, I propose changing it. From should to shall, because that's the right word. Other uses shall only be allowed. They are compatible with these values that consist with the overall public interest. That's a fairly standard. Statement. Does anybody have any sort of issues with that? I don't think we need to add or change that. All right, now comes the fun part. Uh, permitted uses, single family residence, all right. Manufactured homes conforming with seventeen sixteen oh seven zero. So that's actually on page. Next. So flip the page over if you want to look at seventeen oh six. Zero to do manufactured home. Seventy for manufactured homes, seventeen one six oh seven oh. Um. There'll be a new manufactured home. Manufacturing home should be on a permanent race foundation with crawl space as required by. They whack and as specified by the manufacturer. And it must be enclosed by concrete or flue concrete product, which can be either load bearing or decorative. Manufactured homes, homes shall comply with all local design standards applicable to other homes. And it shall meet the energy code. Exterior of all primary structures, alternate accessories shall be several types of siding materials authorized to be used on conventional site build. The manufactured homes should otherwise meet all requirements for designated manufacturer code. Um. What's significant in here is the architectural designs there is in seventeen oh five. Actually apply to manufactured homes. One of the most important parts of that porch, which. The manufactured homes have their porch. They have to have um eaves, spaces and all that sort of stuff. Um, have we seen? I guess that's really the building department and I'll do. I'm trying to think of we've seen a change in the character of manufactured homes go in since we've done the original design.
Yeah, we have because we are enforcing architectural design standards even on the manufactured home. So they're required to have an articulation in your front porch, thirty square feet of coverage. Um, twelve twelve inch eaves minimum.
Okay.
We're going, basically, we're checking right down the list to make sure.
Awesome. You and the building official together.
We're we're working together on that, yeah.
You're seeing a positive impact on that.
Yeah.
Good. Because I I'm trying to think of a new manufacturing home that's gone in recently that ethical, so. Hmm, this is.
Yeah.
This is part of the the ninth tape that built the garage. It's a speck all made by that one place.
Yeah.
I think there was a great spirit because people ordered these things before they acted next.
Right. That is, yeah, if there was a permit issue before the um. Uh, ordinance was enacted, then then they got in under the wire.
So are we happy with the manufactured homes? As long as they meet seventeen sixteen oh seven oh and the architecture design. Okay, yes. Well, I think we've cleaned that up and we've got better. Manufacturing homes, um. We don't reference ADUs in there anywhere, even though they're permitted in a separate section of the code. No, we don't. That's a great point. I'll look at that for the next video too, where it is. It probably needs to be added. But then referenced out for my partner, but. Home occupations. So seventeen fifty oh three zero. Can you find it? It's very hard. All right, it's on page ten down the bottom. I'm gonna let everybody read that and I guess for the audience, I'll sort of summarize it. Uh, sewing, using studio, art studio, home and healthcare products, distributed bookkeeping, fish equipment, storage or repair, rooming and boarding of not. Rooming and boarding of not more than two persons. I'm gonna ask you that. We need to talk about that. And family homes, care, childcare, et cetera. Following conditions. Within the confines of the residence private carriages. Shall regularly employ only individuals of the immediate family, which is common, only retail sales of a nature secondary to home occupation allowed. Um, area of use shall not exceed thirty percent of the growth floor of the main building exclusive of porches. I'll talk about that one. No external or internal alteration known shall be permitted effects care to the home. No, you shall resolve require the use of electrical equipment that would change the fire rating. That's obvious. No outside storage. No display or advertisement. Um, the use may increase vehicle and traffic flow by no more than two additional vehicles at a time. All parking shall be on the property of home occupation. No heavy equipment, no use shall increase dust, vibration, smoke. Um, rooming and boarding as a home occupant. Occupation must be conducted in accordance with provisions of seventeen fifty oh five five transit rentals. Um. I think we're enforcing that and I'm gonna come back to the three I highlighted. Child daycare. Obvious, and it must have a business license if it's doing this. So the the three I highlighted that we really need to look at or the two. Um. I'm gonna go to the last one first. Rooming and boarding as a home occupation must be done in accordance with transit rentals. Um, the work we did on transit rentals still has not made it to code yet. It's in the backlog for code writing for the city attorney. Um. Discussion on that. What are the thoughts on that? I don't know. I don't have a feeling how extensive rooming and boarding are in Ocean Shore. Um. And I don't know, but basically we're saying. If you rent a room in your house. You must get a transit rental license. Because we're saying we want to license transit rentals. In the revised transit rental code. That would be true.
This is an act of less than thirty days, wouldn't it?
Well, that's not what it says here. What it says here is. Rooming and boarding as a home occupation must be conducted in accordance with. Transit rentals. Period.
Which is thirty days of life.
Well, yeah, but it said rooming and boarding must be done in accordance with the provisions of transit rental regulation.
Which prohibit it in R one zone, any of the any of the residential zones.
Which is. But this says it's permitted use in a residential zone. Well, but.
No, it's listed as a home occupation, um.
It's listed as a home occupation. In the residential. I just want to try and figure out.
Yeah, so I would contend that if you're gonna be rooming and boarding in an R zone, that it must be for over. Thirty days, so it would be a monthly room and board as opposed to nightly.
That's fine, which is what the transit rental ordinance already said.
Right.
Yeah.
But it doesn't specify. Okay, so you're saying you can room and board in an R one today as long as it's more than thirty days.
Or rent a house.
Or rent a house, but you can room and board, but you're supposed to have a business license if you room a board. But this, yeah.
Yeah.
I do see ads for renting out our room.
Yeah, I see that. You know, so I have no problem personally with it. I just want to make sure that as we look at the code, we don't do something. That anybody interprets we're shooting ourselves in the foot. So our combined and our interpretation is that reference is the point that makes it. More than thirty days. Is why we're referencing the transit rental.
So that's a city definition between.
Okay, okay. Block, block burn and trench.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and that's something where you have no. Worry about looking at and doing. I I was, but I had I had read this. But I never read it at this extent of how much you can do at a home occupation. I have no idea the extent of home occupations in Ocean Shores. Um, I still the show on Google Maps wasn't a while, so but. I mean, it's it's and then the thirty percent of the growth floor where. For the main building, and I mean, it's so.
Arbitrary, which is, well, the we we do, we're pretty specific about making sure that um that they don't exceed the five hundred square feet. Or thirty percent, whichever.
Because, really?
We when we're reviewing um business licenses for home occupations in Ocean Shores, we're we're looking at that.
Okay. Why do we? Why do we have that limit? I'm just asking.
Um, probably to keep it uh, you know, a business small enough that it doesn't start sprawling outside of the house. I mean, it's pretty hard to. You know, do much in a five hundred square foot space. Um, that's gonna that's gonna, you know, end up with some creep. The types of businesses you can do, you know, would be limited.
The only other question now I remember why I asked for this is we listed bookkeeping. But that's the only professional service we listed. I mean, there are many other. Professional services. Which uh. Are appropriate in my opinion for. Home occupation lawyer. Uh. My house used to be the dentist office. I don't know if anybody knew that. Until nineteen seventy. Did you know that, Tom? Our house, the dentist was in there. Yeah, yeah. But that was a legal home occupation. It was dentistry at the time. I don't think we want to do that now. Do the G remodel.
Yeah, yeah, probably. Web design. I mean, there's a lot of. People working. Not only at home for corporations, but home for themselves as consultants.
That's yeah, that one I wouldn't see us with a business license for. I'm more thinking if somebody is seeing clients at home, at that point, they should be looking right at a business license. At home, at that point, they should be looking right at a business license. Is that your interpretation?
It's stricter than that. But it's stricter than that. But what do you mean performing any business activity already requires a license in Ocean Shores? Even if you. Uh. There's a number of real estate companies that have home office are operating out of their home. One of which has eight or nine people working for it and and. Island Circle. And yet uh. Um. They. Apparently operate without, they have a business license, I'm sure. But they have eight employees, so that's a difficult stomach. There's about three or four others like that too.
Martin.
Um.
I mean, whenever you list something, you're gonna forget something.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm I'm thinking about the comments that Thorn had because that has hit my radar before um. You know, having, but but when I picked the argument back or the pushback was those eight employees don't come to this business. They work autonomously out in the community. And and we work, you know, remotely through that. Through that structure and they're adhering to the, you know, as far as I know, I haven't gone done an inspection.
They probably are.
The maximum five hundred square feet of office space or whatever they're using to manage that real estate business.
And the two vehicles at once. Two additional dog. Only part vehicles.
Yeah.
I would say this is an old, very old definition. And with the internet the way it is, and we've all been up there. We didn't come up with some something that's more trivial.
Does anybody do a boarding house anymore?
Yeah.
Well, we're getting bored, yeah. Um.
I'm years ago, that's pretty common.
Do we have any? License uh uh people doing um. Esthetists, um nails and hair and that sort of stuff from the home for the business license?
I think we used to. I I don't know if there's still.
So. Should we make a hack? I mean, professional services is easy to add. That's a wide catch on. Um. That's maybe the only thing I would add in there. And then. Home occupation included but not limited to. So basically, if you weren't in this list. And you wanted to have a whole occupation, you would submit a business license application. We get reviewed by. You?
All the department heads.
Really?
Yep, goes through police, fire, building, planning. Everybody signs off on a bill because there's implications. We need to those department heads, so yeah.
I didn't realize it was that extended when you applied for business license.
Yeah, and it's done by the state now. I mean, we're using the Department of Revenues um portal.
Okay.
Uh so if you wanna submit a uh. For a business license in Ocean Shores, you go to the state website and make your application there along with state business.
Those extended to you for.
Yeah, and then it gets routed to us correctly.
So. So the only thing we've got that is add professional services for now and I mean. Fishing equipment, storage and repair, we could probably strike. I don't think we have a large demand fishing equipment, storage and repair. Um I'm looking at like you're getting rid of some of the old ones. That don't make sense. Everything else is okay. I know we have a lot of home art studios. We'll leave that in there. Hope everybody home music studios, so let's be giving lessons, which is okay. They show license if they're giving lessons. We've looked at length at that. So this is the fun part of going through the code. This home occupation just took us fifteen minutes. Alright, camping and my intent here is not to go through seventeen fifteen oh two oh and seventeen. And and fifteen twelve oh three five. They are in there. Starting on page. Eight of the agenda. Um. And basically, one of them talks about. Um undeveloped lots and the other one talks about developed lots and. I don't think we wanna get through. Our intent here is not to look at this because we don't know. Thirteen fifteen, I don't know who else fifteen you know. What is? Fifteen the building code?
I I think building. Um but the recreational vehicle uses and and whatnot are typically uh regulated through code enforcement. Because he goes around and stacks for permits and whatnot.
So basically. In your free time, you can read again, because I have to read it like four times every time. See what's legal for camping on a developed and undeveloped lot and now it really comes down to ninety versus thirty days, basically. Um but that's in there and so. Do we have any discussions about changing the ability to camp in the R one area? At this point, I think we'll have public input on it. When we go to hearings, but I don't think we as a group of a small top body, but. Nope, no, we're not talking about that.
People are camping in R two as well, I think.
Yeah, you can camp in anything other than B one. One of the things we'll have to talk about is when we get to the medium and the highs, if we're gonna have camping in the medium and highs and it's like. Um because it's in there and then. Oh, this is gonna probably be my last big headache of this meeting. Non non accessory structures in accordance with seventeen fifty. One fifteen, you guys have been along with your code like. Seventeen fifty. One fifteen. What do you give me a conclusion number? Alrighty, page. Twelve. Non accessory structures. Owners of undeveloped. Real property may erect one shed, tight structure and a fence. We went through this with you, Marshall, right?
Mm hmm.
So for a undeveloped real property, you can have a shed and a fence. And you must get. A permit. For the shed and fence or just the shed, Marshall? For camping lot?
Uh it's a non necessary permit or either or.
Either or. Or both.
Yes.
Okay, so you cannot go to your camping lot and put up a.
A fence or a shed without a permit.
Okay, that's just to clear to everybody in here. What you gotta do on all of that? The Italian drawings, sky plan, eighty square feet max. We knew that. Non accessory shed, permanent foundation, may. Have a permanent foundation, interesting. One window, one door and ventilation and may not use electrical plumbing fixtures. Um. Regardless of zoning, it shall be subject to form R one setback for accessory structures five feet from the sidelines and the twenty twenty five levels. Now, the other one. Is. Seventeen fifty one ten. No, we'll get to that. We're not there yet. So we're back to the main code. We're back to page. Accessory structures under F on page five F, residential garages, carports and other uses of similar. Comparable nature, all subject to fences and then we'll talk our street parking. So we'll look at seventeen fifty one ten. Which is on page twelve, seventeen fifty one ten. Accessory structures. Are permitted only on a lot when there already exists the principal structure is defined by, I think all that, principal structure of house, basically. Provided that temporary search permitted when the building permit is been issued for principal structure. But only for line effect. All accessory structures other than. Temporary structures are permitted elsewhere on this structure shall comply with all applicable construction code. Um downstairs structures, there'll be no further than. Five feet to the rear property lines. So. Accessory structures. Versus non accessory structures. Eighty square foot shed on a residential lot with a house. That require a permit, Marshall.
Um.
And where I missed it.
It's uh it it leads me to believe that a temporary accessory structures are permitted when a building permit's been issued, so that would be like storage shed for tools and stuff like that. Um. Those are, those are handled. Through the permit office and. And we, I've I've just had enough conversations with that. I'm I'm getting it mixed up in my head.
Yeah, alright. Because this has come up before as to, we said three. No more than three accessory structures. Per developed lot.
And I believe there is an accessory structure permit and a non accessory structure permit now that, now that I think about it.
I think there is a separate difference. Huh? Why is there non accessory or accessory? Aren't they the same thing?
Um.
A non accessory by definition is on undeveloped lot. It is not accessory. To her, that's where the term non accessory problem from.
Exactly.
It's not associated with.
They they have a principal structure, a house. Yeah, they seem to allow more latitude on a lot with a primary structure than they do a vacant lot. Vacant lot, they wanted to limit them to basically a small shed and a fence.
And I think the reason being is they didn't want garages. Alright, so anything we need to look at those? I don't think. So, in the interest of head banging, we're not gonna get into. Additional uses probably till the next meeting unless anybody wants to drive on. I think we beat our heads against the wall pretty hard. On this one. So this is the pain we're gonna go through every week for a while in addition to R one. Um. We'll do, we'll sort of that. So I'll, um what I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this out of track changes of. Make the changes we've already talked about. To be in the code and very few so far. And update that. And we'll probably try to get back to R one and finish it at the next meeting. And then from that, we'll go on. Um we will, after next meeting, I think Paul and I are gonna go look at those four areas and see what's going on. They have a lot of acres in some of them because we're. Only be two in town, that's all the way. Um and then I will. I may give you a call next week and come pick up the map.
Okay.
Right at the top of the map if you're ever in your office.
Yeah, I, and when they're. Pretty regular, it's just.
Fifty.
Yeah, we're we're plowing through right now and trying to get these hearings done.
So um. Reports, um I have a report, two reports, but anybody else anything report? Or nothing. So first, we did the lot clearing with City Council. It went pretty good last night. Um. I, I was, you listen, Marshall, I did, I gave you a great phrase. I want a great job you were doing. As always, um and everybody else with appreciation of the work you're doing. They, the tree thing we talked about of the condition of a permit, you know, final occupancy permit or bond was taken. But then they started going off the nobodies. We got these scrape lots and nobody doing anything to them. They're gonna change the bond to ten thousand and look at revegetated ground cover, but it's not coming back to us. Because they tried to send it back to us to write the code. I said it's in the code. It's just a question of enforcement, right, Marshall?
Yeah, for the, for the most part, um. You know, it's one of those things where one or two comments at a council meeting about one or two lots in town doesn't paint a complete picture of what's going on out there.
I didn't wanna say it.
And 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 I kinda take exception to the fact that we've got a bunch of lots out there that are cleared. You know, corner to corner with nothing on them. Forever. Um too late. We, we go through um. You know, a process and the the one thing that we that we have tightened up, uh if you'd like to entertain this um. Is is that timeframe between the time the lot is cleared and the time we get an inspection request. Um I was, I was a year and a half out. Um as of six months, six, seven months ago, I was a year and a half out up on those follow up inspections where we were getting back out and determining whether they had met the landscaping. Requirements, planted their trees or whatever. In the seven months that I've had Chris working with me in the planning department, she's processed eight hundred. Follow up inspections, been to eight hundred lots, written letters of either compliance or requirements to go out and do tree plantings. We've got sixty six or sixty eight letters out there right now requiring tree plantings to bring those into compliance. Incidentally, this occurred uh well before. The council meeting. This is not a reaction to, this is me trying to get the, get the department caught up and in order in processing. Uh permits and inspections, um you know, in a timely fashion. It's, it's taken a year and a half to catch up from a two year lag and and I, and I now feel like there is some light at the end of the tunnel. Um. In in listening to the discussion about the bond last night, I have real concerns about who's gonna dictate the design of these landscape lots. When we do. Uh have somebody forfeit a bond. You know, who's gonna be the contractor that steps on private property and starts imposing his will? I have concerns about that. Um I feel like the best mechanism for enforcing the clearing or the the landscaping requirements. Is that certificate of occupancy, which Roy and I are in agreement is a great tool. Um if you're not getting in your house until you've got your landscaping or tree planting or whatever those requirements are, my guess is that'll probably motivate people to get that done in a. In a pretty quick fashion. Um. That said. I'm going back and I'm looking at houses that um. That were built in the last year. And with the exception of the ones where people have opted for a a black rock front and in most cases, I I looked at quite a few today. Where the black rock. Um fronts um were independent of a landscaped rear yard. So from a habitat standpoint. A lot of these places so that they have uh guest parking, guest parking or. Uh lower, no maintenance front yards, um they've got a landscape backyard, um especially in the cases where they're canal front or lake front. Um but I noticed a lot of that today where. You know, because I'm sensitive to what we're, you know, what the comments are and what we're seeing out there and what's actually on the ground and. Um there's, there's actually a little bit of difference as far as. Some of these landscape yards that have occurred in the last year. Just because I haven't told them to do it, doesn't mean it hasn't been done. Um eventually, we will get to where we create the timeframe as opposed to just hoping that they comply. But I can tell you, there's a a more, more significant amount of compliance, voluntary compliance out there. Than than non compliance. There are a few glaring um that are out there and I'm working on them all the time. Uh. You'll see more silk fence in Ocean Shores today than you've ever seen in the history of Ocean Shores.
I made that comment after the meeting.
Yeah, you you'll also see that there's um straw being used to facilitate um ground stabilization. Uh between the time that they're building and stuff like that to keep sand from blowing either into the street or our neighbors' lots. The other thing that's acceptable as erosion control measures. Um is to leave a five foot vegetated border and I encourage people to do that as a first course of erosion control. Uh to keep sand from blowing onto the neighbors' lots or in the streets and a lot of people employ that. The problem with that is what you see is a bare sand lot with maybe some moat vegetation around the outside that provide for erosion control. Um and then you've got the bare sand blowing around on the inside. In any of those cases, if I have a neighbor calling complaint, um we respond immediately. To um to enforce the erosion control measures of the of the code. And if they need to put silk fence up in addition to straw or whatever, we do that. Most of the contractors. Um. You know, they hop when when I say, hey, I'm having some problems with a complaint next door. You know, a silk fence flies up or they get a bale of straw out there and spread it out over the lots or whatever. Um I don't think it's as big a problem as it was um presented last night as far as erosion control. Are there a few out there? Yeah, and if somebody would just give me a call, we'd deal with them, you know, expeditiously. So. That's kind of, you know, um. Some, some fun numbers that we that we ran and this did occur um just in the last, I guess we've been working on it for a while, but um. Statistics for planning. Um in twenty twenty one, we processed five hundred and eighty one clearing permits. In twenty two. We processed five hundred and fifty eight and as of six twenty one. We've processed two hundred and forty nine um in the city. And and we talk about um. Total credits in the wetland bank that have been consumed. Um since the bank went online, I think there was three credit sales done when I walked through the door. Uh we're at thirty eight now and and most of those are for less than a half a credit per. But um that thirty eight. Thirty eight mitigation agreements paid for the bank and are as now we're putting money into escrow for long term maintenance of the bank. Enforcement action, I can guarantee you there was probably zero people put in front of a judge. Um prior to my tenure, um to date, I've had twenty three people or twenty six people. That have had to go to court um and and fix their violations. That's a number that um I'm not proud of. It's disappointing to me that people just can't follow the rules, um but it's on the street now. Um I I received an email this week, you know, somebody's complaining about receiving a citation. Um. The rules are in black and white and if they follow the rules, there will be no citation, but if you break the rules and you're caught. Um. You know, unless, unless there's mitigating circumstances that that are really justifiable. Um it's gonna result in a citation.
This is landscaping, so.
Um. Um, this is shorelines, wetlands, uh, clearing and grading without permits, um. You know, I've given the contractors, you know, plenty of notice and time to get their clients, um, educated and whatnot. Um, you know, the total clearing permits, um, total as of this month and the last uh, two and a half years, nine hundred and forty-one clearing permits. That's, that's a lot of paper across my desk, um. And, and Chris and Amy are, are shoving it through at, at a record pace and do a few, you know, it's possible that some fall through the cracks. Um, but I, I do have some citizens that are driving around and they make a phone call occasionally and we'll run out and take a look at things, make sure that they're, um. You know, in compliance, we, you know, what we wanna be is fair and consistent to the citizens of Ocean Shores. And, uh, and, and not be treating one individual different than the other, so. Um, you know, critical areas, heap a checklist, we processed a hundred and fifty-one of those, the lion's share of those are docs. So, um, you know, all these permits translate into jobs, in, in my opinion, and one of the things that, that we're trying to do, uh, and I know Roy's doing the same thing in his department. Is to process this stuff in a timely fashion where we can keep the people that wanna have a house built satisfied and keep the people that wanna work, working. I mean, that's kind of our goal, so. Um, yeah, that's a little, little catch on, you know, what I was thinking about last night as I listened to the, the, to the Well. Yeah. Maybe.
I completely understand.
Yeah, but it's, um, we, we feel like we're making progress every day, our systems, our processes, we're getting ready to go online live with um, online permitting in the planning department, starting out with clearing permits, so that, you know, if the permit office is closed. You go online, you, you know, you fill out all the stuff, tell us what you're doing, make application for the permit. Swipe your credit card across your computer and, and we're off and running, you know, it still has to be reviewed. Um, and, and applied, but at least you're able to make application and keep the process moving.
I got a question for you, Marshall, this is nothing to attack. It is, it's on properties that have been there for a long time. Like, my neighbor across the street, she, she passed away, and her, and her granddaughter inherited property.
Sure.
And they, she had a beautiful lot. Well, in four years, she hasn't done anything, so now it's turned into sand.
Oh, really? The whole thing? Yeah, that's.
Is there any code for that?
Um, yeah, I guess if it were a nuisance, um, if you could show that it was impacting the neighbors other than, well, you know, maybe even, uh, I don't know, blight is considered, there's a whole list of things in the code in title fifteen that are classified as nuisances, um, and, and rubbish or you know, I don't know about lack of lawn maintenance, um, if that falls into her.
No, same. It's turned into sand, it's so dead, the sand's coming back.
If, if it's blowing around on other people's lots, if it's leaving the property, then, then it would, um. Then it would be a nuisance. It would constitute a violation because they would need to employ some sort of erosion control measures to keep the sand from you know, imposing itself, and I had that happen on a, on a similar lot where you know, it just got so dried out and whatnot, they had done some construction years past. Let the grass grow up and then it died. And, and now it's just blowing around, so they ended up having to come in and put silk fence in to hold it, hold it stable.
Anything else before I follow that? Yeah, the second thing is, um, and why we'll be public comments, I didn't hear that. That's to typically answer questions, to answer questions and do the update, um. Bluezones.org has a existing agreement contract paid for out of Thurston or Mason County, it's a regional, um, health provider, and what they have basically done is this five oh one C three, who does, uh, community health. Has contracted with Bluezones.org to establish a regional coordinator and provide Grace Harbor County access to Bluezones.org's professionals under that county contract. Um, Marshall, I met with the governor, did you meet with him? And talked to him.
Yeah.
Um, I subsequently met with some of the built infrastructure folks. Because one of the initiatives that the mayor's asked us to look at is safe cycling and walking. And the Bluezones.org does a lot of. So to that end, I met with the Bluezones.org west coast biking and walking. Uh, urban architect, and that's what she does, her husband out of Portland. Um, and suggested someone thinks we had talked about in here. So on the seventeenth, under the, I think I'll, I'll send the date, Mark, we worked with. There is a summit where the national infrastructure, again, paid for under a county program, and even, the county didn't even pay for it, it's a regional healthcare authority that contracted Bluezones. Um, did you get that in by two grand? Um, I don't know, it's a place I don't, you may not have.
I've had so much going on.
Wouldn't be able to go, so they have a summit where they're gonna sort of brainstorm and look at, again, at no cost to Ocean Shores. Doing some concept development ideas on safe walking and biking in Grace Harbor County. I mean, their, their dream, which I'd love to see is a single bike trail along senior to Ocean Shores. Right, that'd be hard to do. Um, we talked about twenty-four mile loop signage, all that sort of stuff, just putting some bike route signs, some caution signs, cyclists in road, that sort of thing you see in other cities. Where we've got some dangerous areas with cycling. So we've got no commitment of the city, uh, the city is not committed to Bluezones.org. But as part of the county initiative, I'm going and I'll send Marshall the information on this summit they're holding in the end of July to see what shakes out. If there's anything in there that is funded uh, without commitment by somebody else that they can help us with. The single biggest interest I have from talking to them, is their true expertise. Again, never paid for because I'm the one that brought it up, is their expertise is organized. If they can at no cost to us, give them some idea on how organized this community, safe cycling, biking, bicycling, and walking, I take that all day long at no cost to us, that's the only way we'll do it. I've been very clear to them in every aspect. There, Ocean Shores, there's no money, we can't pay you. So it's only whatever you can do through this existing grant you got, who are five oh one C three. Um, it's a four-county grant, I think, in Grace Harbor, I think, Grace Harbor, Thurston, and based three counties, I know. For sure. That's sort of where we are, working on that. So additional public comments in the room.
Go ahead. Okay, first of all, I've skipped it, and I might add the most, and I guess I am concerned, uh. I heard one comment made in regards to those of us that buy Arwin property. And you're talking about rezoning of a lot of those areas down into commercial and residential property. My home is on the east side of East Ocean Drive Boulevard, it backs up against a wildlife preserve. And very briefly mentioned today about wetlands restrictions on that property. A lot of those properties are part of the wildlife preserve. And I guess I'm concerned because I don't understand how this committee can have the power to go in and rezone. It was always my understanding that the zoning map that I had accessed due a few years back, the property that I live on was definitely our wife. Which was residential property. And you're talking about taking that area now and rezoning it for a commercial and multiple promotion. Is that correct?
No, no problem. No, that area is one little tiny strip we're talking about on a different section.
Where is it?
Um, it is on Ocean Boulevard between the jetty and
East or regular ocean.
Regular ocean, not, and, and the second, and second part of process, we have no power. We only make recommendations to the council, and then the rezoning would go through multiple public hearings before city council. We don't have any power to change anything. We just make recommendations.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I heard you talk about zone eighteen and nineteen. And I've heard an open discussion about rezoning those areas that were on the east side. And I might add too, that our, that our property backs up against the wildlife preserve, and one of the reasons we enjoy that area so much are the habitat of one of the, the outstanding features of our area, the number of wildlife habitats that exist back in that wildlife preserve. And, and if you're talking about that general area, uh, I like, I guess I was a little, glad it's correct.
So, I think that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what happened. They were talking about the east side of Ocean Shores Boulevard out on the front by the jetty, not East Ocean Shores Boulevard. You are deep in the R one zone that these guys have no interest in discussing.
So, we don't, and we very clearly don't wanna touch. And before we would even recommend any R one rezoning to anything up but R one here, it would be a large consideration. The only reason we consider that particular area is because it's right across the street from World Market and all the others.
Yeah, I can understand.
It's one small strip of one set of lots in that area. We would very, I would be personally as a commissioner, I know the rest of the commission same way, very reticent to rezone other R ones. Other than things that are already sort of in the middle already of that type of area. Other public comments, Jay?
Uh, just, you mentioned something about five oh one C with Blue Zones, right? So where did that come from? Because they're all for profit.
Yeah, they, they were contracted by, I forget the name of it, I'd have to look for it. They were paid for by a regional, um, regional health five oh one C three. Contracted Blue Zones with three or four counties to come in and look at if there's ways they could help the counties.
Okay, so he, because, yeah, everything I see with
No, 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 there's no argument, I mean, I know that. That's why I wouldn't touch them. But what they do is they go to these regional statewide community health organizations. They work with those organizations to get grants to pay for the Blue Zones, to come in and look in the companies of the way to, um, improve the community health, to decrease the cost of healthcare in those counties. If I understand it, it's some of the city. So I wasn't talking about Pacific, it was different one, it was different ones.
Uh, yeah, they mentioned it, there is another one involved that I didn't hear.
It's not Southern Pacific, so now, and it's, it's bigger than Southern Pacific, it's three counties. It's, it's, and it's not West Milwaukee, it's another.
It's United or something.
It's somebody like that, but I know it's Mason, Thurston, and Grange Harbor. Each of them have a regional, have a, a, they funded by a grant. Then they're looking at each county and then they bring in these things. But again, no, never go beyond, because I understand it's a full profit what they do. But what, when they get a grant, that's no cost to us, and they wanna come in and give us some credit expertise, that's okay, right? And we've got no permit, please, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, I also wanted to comment on Blue Zones, I became familiar with it, um, probably about a year ago. Um, and our library actually has a book, they don't have the cookbook, you know. Um, it's a certain way to eat, and then I started doing a lot of research and there was a city in Iowa um, that did, um, hook up with, I don't know what it was, we crossed, which you, I'm not sure. Okay, I remember who it was, and, um. And after a year, they said, no, we don't wanna do it anymore, so the city was stuck holding the bill for twenty-five million dollars. I just don't wanna see our city, um, hooked up in that way, and I do wanna say, shoot, there's so much information online, um, and if people want to, you know, um, use that particular, um, diet, so to speak, go for it, but eating is so personal when it's, um, and I know for a fact that it's, it's a tough way to eat. I can tell you right now, so those are my concerns, that we're gonna get stuck again, holding a bag of something and to the tune of many millions of dollars, I just wanted to.
Only if somebody signs up for it. You have to sign up for it, nobody's signing up for it.
But people, I don't know, I'm so, I see so many things happening without our consent or any town halls. So that's what bothers me.
And again, this is simply a countywide initiative that we're looking at, is, is there a place they can do something for us at no cost?
The sidewalks would be one of the.
Sidewalk, well.
Path is vibrating too.
Or, or safer, safer sized cyclists, the volunteer, otherwise somebody is gonna kill them. Go ahead, Jerry.
I just wanna say thank you for adding this to the end, because it's so helpful after listening to your discussions, it, it appreciated greatly.
And again, we apologize because when we're, when we're intimately familiar with the town and talking zones and neighborhoods, I'll try to continue to be more clear. And all along, we totally understand that any recommendation of zone, anything that's currently R one anything else is extremely difficult, and we would only recommend it in one that it wasn't developed, and even then, somebody bought a lot, expects a little house. Our bigger issue that we're struggling with is what to do about all people that have built R ones in the middle of our seven bar, and obviously people who's in the That's a completely different issue. Different set of things, but like we had talked about, there are areas where we may recommend rezoning of B one to an R one. Because all that's in there is homes. So there's no sense making it commercial anymore, it's sort of become overcome by the market. And we know what we're gonna look at this week with that mayhem. So, we'll see. All right.
Gary, I wanna, last comment, I wanna compliment you, uh, we're new to the era, we're new to these, we went to the meeting last night, and, uh. I wanna, uh, we're trying to tap basis with the names and so on, I wanna compliment you on your presentation there. Last week's meeting, I thought was very well done, and it was to the point, and, uh.
Well, thank you. So, we appreciate it, and I, uh, I was dragged, keeping and screaming onto the committee and, uh. What's going on? All right, next meeting, go ahead.
Hi, Gary.
Uh, I forgot you, please.
Uh, I know you didn't forget me, thank you. Hey, um, thanks for having the extra comment period at the end. But I don't have any comments at this point, but thanks for the opportunity.
And recent comment? All right, next meeting is July eleventh. Secretary. Phil, and do we have a motion to adjourn? Mark, you moved.
Second.
Second Dan, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, guys.